Eckert?
Here.
Benson?
Here.
Milton?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Fisher? Stelling?
Here.
Haniford?
Here.
Item number four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 16, 2016, and B, approval of claims in the amount of $284,591.93 and payroll expenses of $92,388.2. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sub move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, a second by Councilman Benson to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Item six, reports from boards and officers. A is personnel committee meeting from May 16 and May 25, 2016. Councilman Miller, would you or Mr. Dunham, as well as the finance committee report, please.
At personnel committee, the main part of our discussion focused on health insurance rates and coverage and deciding whether or not we should stick with current plans. We are looking at some other plans, and I believe that Joe Don has moved forward with our recommendation on that. We've had to make several changes due to increased costs of the health insurance. We're trying to keep that cost to an absolute minimum. I think we've found the best solution for both the city and employees to make that painless as ever probably can. Joe Don, elaborate a little bit more. And we had some discussion over the retirement program and several options that are going to be available there. And we've got several employees that are looking at retiring this year or in the near future that we had to discuss regarding that retirement program. So if there's any questions on the personnel committee, I or Joe Don can probably take those. The finance committee meeting this evening focused primarily on the budget for tonight that we'll be looking at and having the hearing on. We are still looking at reduced number for next year and planning ahead for the following year on ways that we can look at continuing operations at the current levels as well as projects that are needing to be done over the next couple of years and focusing on plans on how to ensure that the monies are there, how to raise those monies, and make sure that we're not spending money on things that are not necessarily needed at this time. We also had some discussion over water rates and several of the issues that have popped up with the new meter system that have been handled and being taken care of. So if there's any other questions on the finance committee or myself, Joe Don can answer those.
Does council have any questions? Thank you. Item B is tourism board meeting from May 18. Joe Don?
Well, based on the minutes from that meeting, there were in the agenda, there was two items for discussion. One was the Alva Rotary Club 4th of July spectacular, and the Nescatunga Golf Tournament was the second. According to the minutes, both those items were approved at the recommended amount that was recommended for the 4th of July not to exceed $20,000, and for the Nescatunga Golf Tournament not to exceed $5,600.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Dunham? Thank you. Joe Don, will you also give us rec. park board meeting?
We, at the rec. park board, we did discuss the routine items such as minutes and finance statements for April, but we also talked about the recommendation for the 2016-2017 budget. They did recommend what we'll be talking about in the next section. The last thing that was discussed was the possible changes we might be looking at for the committee and for Northwestern Oklahoma State University contract for the usage of the soccer field and softball field. There were some recommendations made as far as that contract goes, and I believe, I met with Kenzie Eadley, who is the chairman of that group, of the contract group, and I believe she was going to be getting with Dr. Pecky about setting up a time. I don't know if that's happened yet or not.
Does council have any questions? Thank you, Joe Don. Item E is the city mayor's report. You know, I want to recognize again that as far as the rec. park board is, rec. park is concerned, they had another tournament this weekend with, it looked like, great attendance. I know there are probably at least a few hundred cars out there in the parking lot when I drove by for softball. And then I think they have another tournament coming up.
This weekend.
This coming weekend. So lots going on at the rec. park, lots of people coming to town from, you know, a few hours maybe, in some cases, out. The former mayor, Chafee, worked with a small committee that we put together for Memorial Day service out at the cemetery this year. From what I hear from those that attended, the service was real nice. They had flags out on the veterans' graves and that kind of thing. And so publicly, I'll thank former mayor Chafee for speaking at that. The Nescatunga Arts Festival looked like it was well-attended this weekend. We also had the Northwestern Ranger Football Golf Tournament, so there was a lot of activity in town over the weekend. Should be, should have been a good economic weekend for Alva. The weather was great. And on other, as far as our appointees are concerned, I do have a few to that are on the agenda here this evening that was able to get Joe Don before the agenda was posted. But I have spoken with a few other people, and I'll tell you that on the tourism board at present time, Terry Parsons has agreed to serve. We'll get her on the next agenda for reappointment. I know that on the board of adjustments, Terry Turner has asked to not be reappointed to that, so we'll be looking for a member for the board of adjustments. Other person not seeking reappointment that I am aware of at present time is Margaret Barton on the cemetery board, so I'll be seeking an appointee for the cemetery board as well. And then we have the ones on the agenda the day that we'll get to later. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions from the council. Thank you. City business manager's report.
Okay. You have the written report. I'd like to elaborate on a couple of other things. First of all, a couple of things. First of all, the Integris Medical Center healthcare permit application is gone through its 30-day comment cycle, has been submitted for Integris. We had one response, one written comment for this cycle that has been turned over to Integris. We are waiting for them to reply. Today, I got the Ida Bailey report. I have contacted the planning commission members to try to line up a date for that planning commission meeting for recommendation. That date has not been set yet, but I'll be looking at doing that in the very near future. Let's see, talk a little bit about streets and the progress that we've got. We will be starting asphalt in streets tomorrow. The only reason it didn't start today was the asphalt plant in Enid was closed today. They have been crack sealing over on Church Street, I believe, today. That will be the first street that they will start asphalting on tomorrow. Plant is supposed to be open tomorrow. Right now, due to weather and a few other things, we're probably about four weeks behind, primarily because of the weather. We had three or four weeks, three weeks there of pretty good rain, at least two. We'll be working to catch up, and just, and we will be working to finish out our plan for FY '16-'17. Once we finish FY '16-'17's plan, we'll have gone through about 85% of the streets in Alva. We will be hitting it hard between now and then. The, we've got streets that are prepped and ready, that we'll be doing Church Street first, then moving up to Sunset and Sealing, or Sunset, and then Young Street, 8th Street, 14th, 12th, and we'll be hitting those streets, getting them done. We'll be paying close attention to the asphalt machine and the work that is being done with that over the next few weeks to ensure that we have a quality product, quality finished product. Ceiling Street, the water department started replacing that water line today. It's anticipated that will take them about three weeks to finish that project. As far as our, some of our other water projects are going, with the AMR project, we have, we are at the last billing cycle, essentially all onto the AMR meter reading process. With the billing side of it, we did find a couple of errors that we are in the process of correcting, and we expect staff will be, staff will be working to correct those and make that fix so we get that, all the bugs worked out of that. We can't expect to have a major process replacement, transition, not have any bugs, so we're getting all those worked out. The Young Street and 8th Street project is done except for the sodding. I did meet with Luckenbill last week concerning that project because there were a couple of areas that I was concerned about. There will be addressing some of those areas. Some of the areas that I was concerned about, Luckenbill had made a, it was the residents and Luckenbill had made, entered into a contract with a local company to re-sod that at those areas, and that's the reason there's not any sod in that area. There's about three or four houses along 8th Street that was under a separate contract that we're not a party of. There will be a one-year warranty on the sods, so if anything happens between the time we accept it and one year afterwards, Luckenbill will come back and fix it. There are project, programs that we do have going on. As Mayor Parker alluded to, the ARC project, program tournament last week had 16 teams. Last weekend, this weekend, they expect to have a very similar tournament. The library reading program started today, I believe, and they're looking at how they can expand that. They have 150 enrolled in that reading tournament, as of this morning's report. Councilman Miller alluded to the, to the personnel committee, some of the changes that we had to make. We did have to make some changes to our healthcare insurance. We switched over, we switched to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we will be starting enrollment on that, on that insurance tomorrow. I've had a few people voice some concerns to me over recently about the possibility of spraying, at least the parks and maybe the community for mosquitoes, concerns about the Zuka virus that is going on. We are checking into that, see what that, what that might entail. Buying the equipment and doing it ourselves would probably be out of the question just because this year, I mean, equipment was $10,000 to $7,000,000 cost. Then you've got to be certified to administer, to buy the chemical and administer it, and we don't have anybody certified at this time. So for us to do it ourselves would be probably pretty much out of the question for this year. Not something that, may be something we want to examine next year, but we will not be self-performing that duty this year. Maybe something we look at contracting out if we can get some, if we can get some numbers on that. And I believe that would be my report as, as of right now. I'd be happy to answer any questions or try to take care of anything I may have left out.
Do you have a start date on the library roof?
Library roof tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yes. Start date on the library roof will be tomorrow.
Does the council have any other questions for Mr. Dunham? Thank you, Joe Don. Item seven is public hearing on annual fiscal year 2016-2017 city of Alva budget proposal. This is the public hearing where we would take feedback from the community regarding the budget that's been prepared. Next item on the agenda would be to discuss and act on adopting that budget, but is there any feedback from the public? All right. Item eight is discussion and action on resolution 2016-002, adopting the general fund budgets for fiscal year 2016-2017 as presented.
This resolution has us projected with, projected resources at the beginning of the year at $3,336,834. Revenues at $7,871,342. Transfers in of $195,766. And expenditures at $8,553,513. For reserve balances projected at $630,000-2850,429. The main reason for that reduction, the main two reasons for that reduction, if we look at the budget document that was, that was sent to you, and if you will refer to page 16, capital improvements. The airport fund will go over budget and use reserves to finish the hangar project. The ARC is, well, that's not part of this budget, this particular budget. Donation fund is using up their reserves. That is for a purpose that it was allocated for.
Joe Don, is there any dark in the gun range?
What, yeah, there are, there's, there's projected gun range expenditures of $25,291.
The gun range service only $5,000 requested for budgeting.
They've got, they've got, the rest of it is in reserves. They've got $20,000 cash in reserves right now. So if, if you look at the budget and you see that they didn't, there's not any projected revenues for that, but yet we've gone over that, that is because we have collected money in previous years for that purpose. The other reason for the decrease in resources from the beginning of the year to the end of the year would be that the hotel motel tax does, which will be part of this fund, does expect to spend about $150,000 to $200,000 more than what they would bring in this year. Projected revenues for that fund was And projected expenditures for that fund was, at the hotel motel fund's request, is $506,000. So that'd be the reasons for the deficit. All the, all the deficits that are there, we do have cash in the bank to cover. So we, essentially, we've collected funds in prior years that we are expending this year. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have concerning this section of the budget.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Dunham?
Just one question regarding utility authority, Joe Don. Looks like we're projecting quite a bit more in water, sewer, sanitation revenue this year than we had last year and two years previous. Clearly, we have less people down.
Can we defer that question until we get to the water, the water utility resolution in that, in that fund?
Yep.
Are there any other questions regarding this item?
Is this the whole item or just part of it?
This would be just the resolution for the general fund types. It's not the entire, the budget's basically in three sections. The general fund, the AUA, and the AEDA. This would be just the general fund.
So when we meet as a utility authority, we'll have that budget there item, and when we meet as the economic development authority, we'll have the budget resolution for, for that, at that time.
What is the police and fire department?
General fund, so it'd be under this section.
Okay. So I had a couple of individuals come to me concerned about the budget regards to the police department and the reduction or elimination of mandatory overtime. And I'm not, I don't, I don't know the whole story, so I'm asking you what this, how this rolls out. Because there was one individual who had stated to me that there's a possibility they could be losing up $8,000 to $10,000 a year in salary on our police department. And that seemed like a drastic number to cut from someone's salary. And I don't know, like I said, I wanted, I wouldn't want to know the, this came from an impassioned individual, so I want to make sure that I'm getting correct information and not just information from someone who is, you know, I'm not saying that they're incorrect, but they might have been misinformed or something else.
Well, I know that I gave the budget out to the department heads as it was, you know, figured out, and based on the employees that we have and based on the salaries that they make, their current salaries, they, there is a, they are going down from this year's budgeted number, but they, but based on the employees that we have and the salaries that they make and the insurance changes that were made, the whole budget is pretty much the same. Everybody's getting a 1% increase, or, I mean, a 2.5% increase in pay schedule based upon a favorable evaluation from the, at their, at their evaluation day. The, it is less than what the budget, the department heads had originally, what was originally figured, but then the department heads were, met with them, and I know that the police department met, and they talked about how they were going to accomplish that and still provide the services. One of the charges, one of the charges that we've had against all the departments is how to control overtime. You know, right, we budgeted, this year, we budgeted $30,000 for overtime, and it looks like they're going to spend $64,000.
Right, and they're taking salary and overtime too, 2.5%.
Yeah. Yeah. So I was not a part of the meeting, but I knew that they had talked about how to reduce their overtime charges, or costs, but that won't be the only overtime discussion that we have.
Essentially, that's going to take boots off the street, isn't it? I mean, no overtime, we're going to have fewer policemen policing.
I would say that we're going to have police officers that are working, should be working in a more efficient manner. A lot of the overtime that has been received, to my understanding, is due to reports and things like that, them in the office filling out paperwork, but they went on the street anyway. So it's keeping them on the street and being more efficient in their paperwork.
I see a large increase in administration. Where will that increased money go to?
Well, that is a reorg, part of that is reorganization. You see, you should see in the next department for, department, which is utility services, you should see a reduction. And basically, what we've done, what I've done is I've taken my salary out of business administration. What was at one time the business manager department, which we are now calling, which we are reclassifying as a utility services, which the office manager will be in charge of managing that budget, and her employees are in that budget. And all the other people that she does not manage have been moved up into admin services.
So the utility office line that's directly under that, that has greatly decreased, you're saying it's come from that and gone up to the reorganization?
Yes, yes. Well, it's just, it's just reclassifying those individuals. Before, the only thing that was in admin services basically was council, mayor, clerk, treasurer, court, judge, and for administrative purposes, I have taken the, myself out of the business manager, the office manager, including the administration, along with three other employees that are office, office employees that are more administration.
I still have a concern on the police department deal. I just feel that on the downside of the oil boom, even this last week, we had two more cars stolen. I just would hate to think that a decrease in budget would keep policemen out the street in a time when it's typically notorious for more lawlessness, is when people lose their jobs and end up without money.
Object is not to have less patrol officers on the street. Object, you know, we are not cutting back on services.
Is there any further discussion on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2016-002, adopting the general fund budgets for fiscal year 2016 and 2017.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, same by Dr. Haniford, to approve resolution 2016-002, adopting the general fund budgets for fiscal year 2016-2017 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
All right. Item number nine is discussion and action on the approval or disapproval Item number nine, is discussion in action on the approval or disapproval of lease at Harper Road Site to Ben Orcutt in an amount of $20 per acre.
Um, we bid this out on, on two, at, two occasions. It was, uh, advertised in the newspaper. We did direct mailings of people that had been interested in the past for, uh, for these, for these leases. Mr. Orcutt was the only responding, uh, respondent for this lease, so I'd be recommending the, uh, approval of this contract and an authorized in the mayor to sign the agreement at $20 per acre.
Is it going to be for farming or for grazing?
Well, uh, get a more, I anticipate farming.
Why would it vary so much to be greater than the airport property that leases at $60?
The bidder.
The bidder is just up to bid?
Yeah. Yep.
If there's not any further discussion, I would entertain an emo, I would entertain and, oh, good grief. Anybody care to make a motion?
Make approval of the lease at Harper Road Site to Ben Orcutt in an amount of $20.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Valencia, second by Councilman Melton, to approve lease at Harper Road Site to Ben Orcutt in an amount of $20 per acre. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Valencia?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 10 is discussion in action on negotiations with IAFF Local 3782, Alva, Oklahoma, on fiscal year 2016, 2017 contract.
Uh, the only thing we were waiting on as of the last negotiation time was the healthcare numbers. We received those, uh, presented those, presented that information to the union. The union has signed off on it, and it is ready for your approval.
Is there any discussion on this item? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the contract of the IAFF Local 3782, Alva, Oklahoma, on fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Benson, to approve the contract, IAFF Local 3782, Alva, Oklahoma, on fiscal year 2016, 2017 contract.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We just want to comment on, uh, on, on behalf of all the council members, and the first chairs, and Councilman Benson, and Councilman Melton, and I thought, working out, and they're signing the contract, the contract.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 11 is discussion in action on the reappointment of Terry Turner to the Alva Airport Commission for a five-year term. I've, uh, visited with Mr. Turner, um, regarding his, uh, potential for reappointment. We talked about some of the, um, his, uh, I guess the things he'd like to see the airport board accomplish and that he'd like to be a part of, and I, I feel like he is a, a good candidate for reappointment. He is willing, and, um, I am putting him before you for reappointment.
I'll move to approve, uh, Terry Turner on the Alva Airport Commission for a five-year term.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Benson, second by Councilman Miller, to reappoint Terry Turner to the Alva Airport Commission for a five-year term. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 13 is discussion in action on the reappointment of Linda Joseph to the Alva Library Board for a three-year term. Um, as with Mr. Turner, I have spoken with Mrs. Joseph regarding, uh, reappointment to the library board. I've, uh, I, I feel like in, in having, uh, communicated with, um, library manager that, uh, the, the board works real well the way it is right now, and so, um, Mrs. Joseph is, uh, willing to be reappointed, and therefore, I am asking the council to reappoint her.
To approve the reappointment of Linda Joseph to the Alva Library Board for a three-year term.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Valencia, second by Councilman Melton, to reappoint Linda Joseph to the Alva Library Board for a three-year term. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Valencia?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item 13 is discussion in action on the reappointment of Chance Schultz to the Alva Planning Commission for a three-year term. Um, as with the others, I've spoken with Mr. Schultz. Uh, he is willing and able to, to serve another term, and therefore, I'm, uh, recommending his reappointment to the Alva Planning Commission.
Motion to approve reappointment of Chance Schultz to the Planning Commission for a three-year term ending June 2016.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Melton, to reappoint Chance Schultz to the Alva Planning Commission for a three-year term. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Item 14 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Public comment will be limited to minutes per speaker. Speaker must identify himself or herself. Would anybody care to make public comment this evening? Thank you. All right, we will adjourn the meeting of the city council and open the meeting of the Alva Utility Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Miller?
Here.
Melton?
Here.
Benson?
Here.
Eckert?
Here.
Valencia?
Here.
Fisher?
Stelling?
Here.
Haniford?
Here.
I was gonna say something that wasn't on the agenda. Um, all right, thank you. Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consider, consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 16, 2016, and B, approval of claims in the amount of $73,233.93 and payroll expenses of $23,861.69. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Dr. Haniford, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Item five is discussion in action on Resolution 2016-003, adopting the enterprise fund budgets for fiscal year 2016, 2017 as presented. Um, Joe Don, and you will address the water revenue questions.
Yes, I will.
Okay.
Well, um, start off, I'll set... Starting off the year, we are looking at having 1,600, uh, 62,000, or 1,62,834 dollars as projected resources to begin the budget year. Uh, expected, uh, anticipated revenues are 3,733,851. Uh, anticipated transfers out of 1,462,672 dollars and expenditures of 2 million, 200,131 dollars with projected reserves at the end of the year at 1,133,882 dollars. Um, to address specifically Councilman Valencia's concerns about the, uh, water revenue...
No, sir, it's just a question.
Good, uh, question, concern, understand, understandable. Um, the reason for this increase is not rates, it is, um, utilization of our system and tracking our system. Right now, we are billing for water that we have not collected for in the past. Uh, there were water, there were, um, water, there was water consumed, uh, that was not billed for appropriately in the past, and this new system by replacing this, we've come across this, uh, numerous times and throughout this, um, uh, progression into the new AMR system, where we have found, uh, accounts that were being billed incorrectly. Uh, and when I say incorrectly, I mean lower than what they should have been. Um, and so if we take the current expected uses based on our current reads and project that out, we would, we would, we would anticipate our revenues for water and sanitation to, uh, to increase by those, by that amount, by increases by about $90,000 from this year's budget for water and about, uh, $60,000 in sanitation. Sewer will increase about $20,000. Sewer is a, is a derivative of what the water usage would be. Um, that is the reasoning for the, the expected increases.
So it's not an increase in rate to the general citizen, it's just better reading ability now?
Yes, is not an in rate, increase to the, um, individual citizen. We have done that. There are a couple of businesses that I have visited within the past when we did our rate change back in December and moved from the, what I'll refer to as from a, uh, regressive to a progressive rate, meaning that the water rates were being charged for, at a higher rate on the lower end and a lesser rate on the higher end. There were some businesses such as, um, BJCC, uh, the college, the schools, that would have very negatively affected their budget, their current budget. Council at the time decided not to, uh, change those rates and for me to visit with those customers. We are at this time talking about whether or not we enact that change, but that has not been voted on by the council yet. Uh, that would have to be a resolution change that would ultimately be brought back to this council to vote on. Uh, that is some of the water rate changes that Councilman Miller alluded to in the, from the finance committee meeting. Uh, they have asked me to go back and visit with the, those entities and see if there's some way that some, some other, yeah, some other way we can reach, uh, reach something that works for everybody, which I'll start making contacts for those, um, uh, today or tomorrow, uh, to try to arrange those appointments, but at this time, there are no rate increases scheduled or planned for the city of Alva or anything. Um, but just being able to read the meters more effectively. Um, there were meter readings that we had found that were high usage meters that had been dead for over a year, um, that we're going to be able to, um, recoup the funds on. We didn't go back and try to bill them for the water that they had used, but we knew that those, we know that those entities out there exist, and we'll be getting better reads with our new meters. So we're being more efficient, more accurate with our numbers, with the, with the better equipment. Um, and that would be the, my answer to your, uh, to your question, Councilman Valencia. Uh, I hope that answers your question.
Are there any other questions regarding this resolution, this budget?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-003, adopting the enterprise fund budgets for fiscal year 2016, 2017 as presented. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Item 3 is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 16, 2016, and item B, approval of claims in the amount of $18,766.43 and payroll expenses of $7,117.49.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Benson, a second by Councilman Miller, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
I made the motion.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Benson?
Yes.
Uh, I did give this a second.
Miller?
I'm sorry, but, uh, uh, Miller?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
I'm done.
Just say, slow down. Um, all right, thank you. Uh, item five is discussion in action on the approval of Resolution 2016-004, adopting the Alva Economic Development Authority fund budgets for fiscal year 2016, 2017 as presented.
Um, projected resources to begin the year are 1,528,312 dollars. Uh, revenues expected over these two funds is 119,983 dollars. Transfers in of 1,197,968 dollars. Uh, anticipated expenditures, 1,292,878 dollars for projected reserves at the end of the year of 1,553,385 dollars. Um, these two funds are our AEDA fund, uh, transfers in is sales tax, as voted on by the people. The, uh, we're, the, uh, scholarship fund is, I've, I've visited with the, the college, and this is, they expected, they expect, uh, scholarships at the same level as what we did this year. Um, there is cash in the bank to cover those. The, uh, AEDA fund was, was, uh, looked at by the, uh, Alva Rec Center at their last board meeting and approved, um, for, for this board.
And I'll add, at, at this time, that I do appreciate, uh, all the staff, the department heads, the finance committee for the, uh, work that they've done on all of these budgets. Um, I think, um, we have, it was a, a big challenge to deal with a significant... I think we have, it was a big challenge to deal with a significant decrease in projected sales tax, and I think this is still going to allow us in all of these areas to accomplish the things that we need to be accomplishing and be, I guess, forward-thinking enough that we're not going to break the city in the process. So in fact, we'll continue to be in a good position. So at that now, if there's any further discussion.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2016-004, adopting the Alva Economic Development Authority fund budgets for fiscal year 2016, 2017 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Miller, a second by Councilman Benson, to approve Resolution 2016-004, adopting the Alva Economic Development Authority fund budgets for fiscal year 2016, 2017 as presented. Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Hanford?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Eckert?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.